Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of City Council of City of Pearland for July the 23rd, 2018. Okay, that's right. City of Pearland has come back at 6:40 to a little early than that really. Returned from the executive session. And moving into our executive session to new business item number one, consideration possible action regarding appointment to boards and commissions. Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to appoint Ronald Wicker to position number three on the Planning and Zoning Commission, an unexpired term expiring November 2018, and appoint Christopher Tristan to the Zoning Board of Adjustments, alternate number three. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Appoint Ronald Wicker as the member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Pearland. Is there any further question or comment on this item? Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number three, adjournment, and we adjourn at 6:40, looks like 40, 6:41. And in light, Mayor, let me open a regular meeting of City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, July the 23rd, 2018. And I'll ask all of you to be with us as we go through the process of our meeting tonight. We've got some very interesting items and some losses. We always sorry to lose some of our members, but we're also nice to have an opportunity to gain some new members on our board, on our city council. But before we do that, I'd like to have our mayor pro tem, Senator Perez, give us the invocation, and our city engineer, Robert Efton, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Bow your heads. Lord, I ask you, you give us guidance as we move forward in these proceedings, help us to make a sound and educated, wise judgments. I ask that you look out for my fellow council members, for the citizens of Pearland, for our staff, and for all of our first responders, as well as those in the military who are out defending our freedoms. In your name we pray. Amen.
There's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am the Texas flag. My allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
After starting our meeting off the right way, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, because I think it's a very special Monday night. We are, if you're freezing, let me know. If you're still burning up, let me know. We'll move you around a different spot in our council chamber, where some of the hot spots and then some cold spots here. So as we go through the process tonight, we'd like to have opportunities to touch base on a number of issues that affect our city. And our agenda is quite lengthy, and we will go through the process in an orderly as possible fashion. Moving in our agenda to roll call, all of our city council members are here with bright and shiny faces. We do have item number four in our collective agenda, and I'll use the same agenda that you have. Our mayor pro tem, citizen comments. We've got citizen comments before we do.
All right, I have two people who've asked to speak on a, or to speak to council, not on a specific item. I have two others that want to speak on a item. We'll call y'all up when that item is on the agenda. So first, I believe, if I'm pronouncing this correct, Charles McMurray, is that correct? If you'll want to come up. And if you'll please, if you'll please give your name and address for the purposes of the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charles McMurray. I live at 5209 Spring Branch Drive, here in our great city of Pearland. And what I've come to discuss this evening, we had our pledge of allegiance, and we talked about our ideas of our country. And what I want to talk about tonight is our election process, and how the process of how we elect our elected officials can have a definitive effect on who gets elected on the outcome, is I want to give some examples like that. In our national elections, we have an electoral college versus the popular vote. Here in the most recent presidential election, one person won the popular vote, one person won the electoral college, therefore, the person that won the electoral college under our constitutional system of law became our president. Over time, our desire to improve our democracy and our representative government, we've had changes in the evolution of our representative government. For example, at one point in time, you had to be a property owner in this country to vote, but we decided that it was appropriate to let people who didn't own property vote. Last century, we changed on how we elected our U.S. senators to our Congress in Washington from where they were selected by the legislatures to let the people choose how our senators were elected. We also last century allowed women to vote. There was a case, I believe, from Texas that went to the Supreme Court in the 60s about call one person, one man, one vote, because at one point in time, you might have a rural district that had 100 people in it, electing a representative, or you had a metropolitan city with several hundred thousand people, but they each had the same representation in the legislature and Congress. And over time, we decided that was unfair, and we changed that. What do I want to talk about, what does that have to do with the city of Pearland? It has to do with this council body right up here. Is presently, our council has elected at large, all seven members are elected from the entire city. Our city is quite diverse. The most recent council election and the one before it clearly demonstrated that there are differences in demographics and election preferences, political differences within our city between the, what I'm going to call the west part of the city and the east part of the city. Those are demographic differences, differences in all sorts of statistical, wherever, however you want to slice it, it's differences. Council has the responsibility to periodically appoint a charter revision commission, and when you get ready to appoint your next charter revision commission, we need to turn around and specifically appoint people who are willing to look at data and philosophy and consider the appropriateness of having single-member districts so that everybody in the city has a representation at this council table. Is that, I had the privilege back in 2001, serving on a city charter revision commission, and the five-member commission back in 2001 unanimously recommended single-member districts, but the council decided not to allow the citizens back in 2002 to have the opportunity to vote that up or down. The council decided not to do that, and you can look that vote up if you want to. Woody Owens was on that particular point in time.
Mr. McQuarrie, if I could ask you to wrap up your presence, your presentation, please. You passed your three minutes. Could you please make some final statements?
I have 30 seconds to petition the government. Woody Owens, back in October the 17th, was quoted in the Houston Chronicle as saying this, "With all the growth going on, I think that the need to wait four or five years and let that growth take its natural course." Furthermore, then he said, "Then we could do it, hold an election then." Well, that was 2002. You said four or five years. It's been three times that. Let's turn around and have a charter revision commission to seriously look at that, because there are differences in this city and the council does not fairly, because of the way you select your people. You have a large number of people in one section of the city disenfranchised. Their views and needs are different on one side of the city to the other. Thanks for the extra 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. Next, Jason Perry. If you'll give your name and address for the purpose of the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Jason Perry. I live at 3903 Cedarwood Drive. I'm here to address the council on what I addressed the council on previously, which is the brand name and brand power of this city. I helped a candidate recently get elected who worked at a bank. He told me his bank was having a lot of problems financing houses along Berry Rose, because in neighborhoods, half of the homes would be zoned Pearland ISD, and half the homes would be zoned Pasadena ISD. And homes that were Pasadena ISD could sell as much as $100,000 less than homes that were in Pearland ISD. People were paying to, willing to pay an enormous premium just for the idea that their kids were going to Pearland schools with Pearland residents. That's an example of the power of the brand name of Pearland. And I want to continue to see that branding, continue when people think of that, to think of Pearland as an upscale community. That is a great place to live. And as I drive from Friendswood to Fresno along 518, I see a lot of interesting businesses, liquor stores, tattoo parlors, interesting places that remind me of Shaver or the Montrose more than Pearland. One of those places I continuously seeing are businesses that are, in reality, de facto bordello's. And there's a really great service called rubmaps.com. Anyone at home following along, it's R-U-B-M-A-P-S.com, which allows you to keep track of businesses here in town where you can exchange money for sexual services. Some of these are not far from Councilmember Little's home. One of them's within hundreds of feet of Mr. Perez's business. One is in the shame shopping center, is Mr. Hernandez's business, which makes it not far from a couple other people's homes. One is actually not far from Mayor's house at all. I don't want people to associate Pearland as that place with the liquor stores and the interesting massage parlors, and see that destroy and devalue the land value of basically everyone in this area's property. I'd love to see some sort of initiative to make sure that we can kind of see less and less of this. I've heard from different people ways that we could prevent new places from opening, maybe amend the UDC so that spas and massage parlors would have to get a conditional use permit, because I think the seven of you are smart enough to figure out, is this place legit, or is it not? I think that would then stop new businesses like this from opening up, and how you could deal with the existing ones would be simple changes, like maybe they shouldn't be open after 11 o'clock at night. Who needs their foot rubbed at 11:30 at night? Maybe that's not really a foot massage parlor. Simple changes could disincentivize people from opening up businesses that could destroy the land value of literally everyone's home in this city. I just don't want to see the philosophy and the concept of what Pearland has changed, something that no one in this room wants. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mayor, that wraps up all of the comments for items not directly related to an agenda item.
Moving into our agenda, and I'm going to put the city council and staff to work now. Item number five is a public hearing, a docket public hearing, which I shall open at 6:53. And the purpose of the meeting is to receive public comment and testimony regarding Plan Amendment Number Four, the Project Plan and Retirement Zone, Reinvestment Zone Finance Plan of Reinvestment Zone Number Two. And at this point, I'll ask for staff review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Pearson will give overview. This is the public hearing portion. There is an action item from number two for this, but just to get everybody up to speed, Cynthia will provide this update here.
Thank you, Mayor Reed and Mr. Pearson. We're here to hold a public hearing on the Tax Rent Increment Reinvestment Zone Budget Plan Amendment Number Four. With us tonight is Ms. Sue Darcy, representing Marsh Darcy, the TERS Administrator. Sue is available, along with our Assistant City Manager, Trent Emerson, to answer any questions that you might have. The Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, commonly known as the TERS, is an economic development tool available to Texas cities. It is used for specific geographic areas that are defined by city council. The City of Pearland's TERS Number Two was created in 1998-99 and expires in 2029. The use of the captured tax proceeds are eligible for public improvements such as streets, drainage, utilities, and public facilities. This is a map representing our TERS zone. TERS Number Two includes approximately 3,467 acres in the Shadow Creek Ranch development. It is one of the largest and most active TERS in the state of Texas. It is second only to the Woodlands. The TERS Number Two participants are the City of Pearland, Brazoria County, Fort Bend County, and Alvin ISD. In the original TERS plan and budget in 1999, we set for infrastructure improvements in an amount of $108.2 million, zone administration and creation, $1.3 million, city facilities for $5 million, and educational facilities for $134.1 million, for a total budget of $248.7 million. The TERS budget amendment process consists of four steps. On April 30th, city council gave direction to staff to present the draft plan amendment to the TERS Board of Directors for consideration. The plan amendment was presented to the board on June 18th, and the board unanimously recommends that city council adopt the amendment. The three other participants in the TERS have been notified prior to this public hearing. And since the amendment would increase the total estimated project costs, we must hold a public hearing, and that is what we're doing right now. This public hearing is to allow for public input prior to recommending city council approval of TERS Plan Amendment Number Four. Plan Number Four, proposed projects. Infrastructure improvements of $28.1 million, and they include Shadow Creek Ranch Park Phase Two for $9.7 million, Shadow Creek Trail for $2.2 million, Shadow Creek Parkway landscaping, sidewalks, and street lighting for $7.1 million, intersection improvements for $7.9 million, and sidewalk extensions for $1.1 million. It's a total of $28.1 million. It also includes city facilities of $24.1 million, to include the library for $14.2 million, and a fire police station for $9.8 million. So the total of Plan Amendment Number Four is $52.3 million. The total budget for the TERS-funded city projects, the fourth Plan Amendment is $52.3 million. The remaining original TERS budget for the library is $3.9 million, and for the fire station is $3.5 million, for a total budget of TERS-funded city projects of $59.8 million. You will note that the difference between the requested Plan Amendment and the total budget is the remaining allocation of $3.9 million for the library and $3.5 million for the fire station. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, appreciate that input. Moving in our agenda to the next item with citizen comments. Mayor Pro Tem Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any members of the audience that would like to address the council with respect to this item? Second time, is there any member of the audience that would like to address the council with respect to this item? Third and final chance, is there any member of the audience that would like to address council with respect to this item? No one seems to want to talk about it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, moving into our agenda to the next item, which is council staff report. Let's work with the council report. Sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a question to staff, so we're amending this so that some of the city's infrastructure and the projects outlined can be funded through the TERS. What would happen if we did not do this? Would the TERS just end, and that tax revenue go back to the citizens? Or could you expound on?
Thank you. Thanks for the question. This would not end the TERS or extend the TERS, I think it's important to note. The TERS would continue, and it's mandated to be ending in 2027, '28, something like that. So, and this is a portion of the, is the capture of the city's property taxes. So this would not be, change a resident's tax rate or anything that they paid. This just depends on how it's allocated, and this plows those monies back into these infrastructure improvements within the district, as was noted there.
So essentially, we're getting in line for some potential funding sources to come?
Yes, sir. So this would put the city in line for these public improvements that Cynthia outlined. Most of those were already identified in the original TERS budget, that's just chewing them up to modern costs and aspirations. So these are, for the most part, are not brand-new ideas or projects, but like you said, this would get the city in line to be able to further these projects and use monies from the TERS and allocations from the school district and the Fort Bend County, Brazoria County, for each of those respective areas.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
No questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are with respect to the budget. We have, we have items, the projects itemized in the packet with dollar values associated with it. For obvious reasons, as we were fine-tuning it, these values went down from what was originally proposed. For instance, the library was at $18 million, it's now at $14 million. But my question is with respect to budgeting and timing. How comfortable are we with these numbers? What are we assuming with respect to timing of these projects? How quickly can we get these going? Do we have contingency factors in these numbers that account for if these don't go, if this project doesn't happen within the next year or so, maybe two years? Do we have contingency in there to deal with the budget adjustment? And if for whatever reason, one of these projects comes back and the construction bid is higher than what we anticipated, what's the amendment process for us to be able to deal with that adjustment?
I'll take the first and last part of those. So if there is another amendment necessary, that would be just the same process. We've had, this is the fourth amendment, so it goes through the same process where we have to post the notice, have a public hearing, and the council decides on the budget amendment. You know, the, keep in mind that these are, for large parts, for instance, like the library, these are not, these are amendments to the budget, there isn't existing allocation already, and so these are adding on to those costs. And the other, before I ask Trent to talk about all the contingencies and the timing is, the, this is the budget amendment. We still have to figure out the financing and the costs, so there's more work to be done there. You know, these aren't going to start tomorrow, but we do have plans to figure out how to do the cash financing, get ready with some preliminary engineering, start the processes, so we're not going to, you know, just wake up in three years and start thinking about it. So we'll outline that as we go along further, but Trent or Robert can talk about the contingencies and the timing as we know it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. A couple of points on, like the library, the $18.25 that was referenced versus the $14 presented tonight, the budget is still the $18.25. It's the $14 plus the amount, almost $4 million, that was in the original TERS budget added together that make the $18.25. That estimate was based on an expectation that the project would be under construction within the next couple of years. We're going to be looking to start the design on that here very shortly, and that does have contingency built into it as far as the estimate. And then on top of that, this is establishing these TERS dollars in $2018. The TERS does have a mechanism for, as we move forward, that there is a price index that it's tied to, so in future years, the reimbursement will follow along with that, so it can go up as cost increase if we don't build it within the next couple of years.
So so long as any pricing that comes back after we get construction estimates are within the price index, there's no amendment necessary?
That's correct. And if it were outside of that, and the TERS was producing enough value, we could look at a future TERS amendment if necessary.
This may be a little too early to ask, so I understand if it's, if we're not there yet, but is the idea, once these projects get approved, to be including the TERS, that we're going to immediately move forward with PERs, preliminary engineering for all of these, and kind of schedule all these projects to be released immediately, or do we have a phasing plan for them?
I believe there's going to be, we would have a phasing plan. The fire station is already under preliminary design work. We're very close to having a contract ready to bring to you for the library work. And then the others, we would phase in, you know, beyond that, just so that we can balance out our work levels.
Just one last question. With respect to the sidewalk extensions, would those be done as discontinuous projects, or would we try and release that all at once?
I believe we'd try to look at that as a comprehensive project, looking at where there are schools now that weren't previously there, and there's maybe points in the sidewalk that are discontinuous. Still a route to get there, but we can make a more direct route to the schools and look at areas like that and other areas where we can make better connections with the sidewalks that don't exist today.
Thank you for your work. I know that I've made comments in the past about the priority for the library, at least for me, but I know the sidewalk is also very much needed, because we have, we've had a number of accidents where that could potentially be avoided, particularly at school times when if we have the sidewalk built on the other side of the street, such as on Kirby and Business Center. So if I, we'll have more opportunity to talk about it, but if I could express my priority for those two projects, top of the list, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the trail, Shadow Creek Trail. It looks like it's extending all the way east to connect to the trail on the other side, east of Kirby. But whenever I kind of zoom in, there doesn't look like there's an intersection or anything. How was that safe crossing achieved there? What do we have in place for that?
Councilmember Hernandez, the plan is to go underneath the bridge, and so it'll be an under, under the road crossing. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Of the 59, almost $60 million additional request, 42 of that is for original projects. Did we just underestimate the cost of these projects, or how did we come up with needing an additional 42 million?
So the original budget was put together in 1999. That's what those dollars are based on, and it included all of the infrastructure categories that we're moving forward with, but not necessarily all of the scope that's proposed here. And then on the library, as well as the fire station, there was only $2.5 million included for each of those. And I believe that was, you know, at a time, and when our fire stations were volunteer fire stations, they weren't, they didn't include all the capacity that we have in our fire stations for our 24/7 operation that we have now. And same for the library. I don't believe that it was contemplated necessary scope for a second library in Pearland, but as we've seen with the, with the West Side Library, it being the either first or second highest circulation in the county, with Tom Reed Library across the street, that we needed to make sure that that facility was adequate to handle that type of volume of patrons and circulation. So although they were originally contemplated, there's a little bit, you know, a different need today than there was in 1998, 1999.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that we're going to go forth with all these projects and not sit on them and have the price increase on it, like with the 2007 bond projects. I want to get this started, get it done, get it paid for, and be done with it. I don't want to have a lot of cost creep in these projects.
Councilmember Rowens.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
The original TERS, uh, should be up 2029, and going through and looking at, uh, information we got here that if we do this, uh, these bonds, that, uh, I think it said it'd be paid off by 2025. Is that correct?
Well, the estimates are, you know, what they are, and, uh, you know, very conservatively based, uh, you know, we would probably stop issuing, uh, debt at some point in the next couple, three years and just do cash projects after that, uh, so we wouldn't need to be dimes, and then as you get closer and closer to the end, uh, you'll have a better picture of what's available. So, it'll be some kind of a payout of what's left over if there is anything available and close it out in that timeframe.
Uh, Sue Darcy, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, please, ma'am.
Those of you who don't know me, I'm Sue Darcy, uh, and off and on, I've been the administrator of the TERS since 1999. I was a brunette when these numbers were put together.
Yeah. Sue, I was just wondering if, running out to the end of the time of, uh, 2029, uh, based on where we're at today, what kind of funds would we have left over and our capability of using?
Couple of things, Councilmember. Number one, the TERS is gonna last through 2029 because of the debt service that's already issued. So if, without this amendment, it doesn't affect the life of the TERS. The TERS is gonna go on because there's debt service running out that long. Secondly, um, there was a financial model that we prepared using, uh, existing values with no growth and appreciation in the homes, no future commercial construction, simply , uh, taking the build-out projections of the three builders that are currently building in the next five years, they all projected they will be built out. That's the only new value we added to the model. And in that, uh, once all of the developers are paid back, the zone over that ensuing eight years generates approximately 68 million bucks additionally over all of their obligations. So we feel that we've run a conservative model. Uh, we reviewed it with staff, we reviewed it with financial, uh, we went over it with your bond council, I mean, your bond, uh, your FA, and everyone feels like we have a, a fairly conservative model that predicts under existing conditions, assuming all participants remain in, that this, there is adequate and maybe even more revenue that could come in.
Okay, so, at the end of 2029, you're saying that there's gonna be dollars left over probably based on what we do?
There, there could be dollars left over, yes.
Does those dollars still have to stay with the TERS and, and within that area?
If you recall, in your inter-local agreements, you're required to give back, uh, any residual funds at the end of the life of the zone, if there are any extras, the participants and their pro-rata, uh, share of participation. So everybody gets their money back in their pro-rata share, and any interest that's earned on that, they get that back in a pro-rata share.
Yeah, well, I have a question from someone that sent me one today, as I wanted to make sure that this did not have any impact against, uh, Allen School District.
You know, school district funding is something totally out of our control, Councilmember, uh, but, but, but what, what we've done with this model is to try to develop a predictive tool, so that not only does the city understand what unwinding the TERS is gonna look like to you all financially, but that it also helps the school district plan for that ultimate unwinding of the TERS, uh, in, in itself. As the, as, the TERS has its own financial advisors and school district finance experts who are advising them. We've shared the model with them, they understand it, so they agree that it's, it's better to know 10 years out what's gonna be the end result than to not.
Okay. So whatever funds are left, it can only be spent within that TERS or divided back out to each one of the entities?
Yes, sir.
They can do whatever they want to with it?
They, they can do whatever they want to with it, yes, sir. Goes back as general fund dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does that complete your report? Good. Information for the council. One of the things I'd like to mention is that, uh, in 1997, 98 timeframe, when we were talking about, how well is this gonna, development gonna, uh, is, is it gonna be a, uh, boom, or is it gonna be something that's really be some very special? And, uh, these items were anticipated to be in that development at, at one time and during its, uh, its growth as, as a fine organizational part of city's Pearland. We're now to the point where these are really a part of where we need to be, and it is now, uh, our responsibility in this particular, uh, public, uh, public hearing to, um, make sure that we, uh, bring this out, share it with you, and these will be put in place because now Shadow Creek Ranch is ready for a library. They were not when we start, started back 1997, 98. So, I think it's a very timely thing, it's, it's, uh, it's very well put together, and I think it's, uh, it's doing fine. At that point, I'd like to have staff do any wrap-up comments at this point they'd like to make.
Nothing else, Mayor. I'll, I'll leave a couple comments on the action items, so, that's it. Nothing else.
Okay. Looking at my agenda, the next item I have is called adjournment, and I will so do at, uh, if I can get my little clock pretty well where I can see the number, 7:15. I'll adjourn that with 7:15, and since we were over, uh, misplaced and finally have recovered, a couple of comments, should have been in the citizen comments, I'll have, uh, Mayor Protemdo lose at this point now before we proceed into the consent agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, these are comments with, with respect to the consent agenda. Um, there's not really a portion, uh, exclusive for the consent agenda for these items, so we're gonna go ahead and ask, uh, those individuals that wanted to speak to this one item on consent to come up now. Um, so, uh, in order that they, I receive them, if Ms. Luana Concha would come up and she wants to speak to item, um, 6B. If you'd please give your name and address.
Yes, I'm Luana Concha. I live at 17306 Fife Lane in Webster, Texas, and I'm a great granddaughter of John Lizer. Um, I learned last week that the city was wanting to rename the road named after him, something else.
Would you move a little closer to the microphone? I think I could hear you.
Yes, they wanted to rename the, the road to Magnolia Parkway, but I've since learned from Congressman, Councilman, not Congressman yet, Councilman Hernandez, that the city has suggested several other alternative names for the John Lizer name not to be forgotten. I just don't want his name not to be remembered. Uh, and I would be happy to, you know, discuss any other, uh, names the city would have, and I do thank you for your time for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and next wish, uh, wishing to speak is John Mickey Mark.
Good evening. Uh, I'm here representing the Pearland Historical Society, and I am president of the Historical Society, and, uh, we had a meeting last Thursday night, and, um, most of us weren't aware that the, there had been a motion and a, um, it had passed to change the name of John Lizer Road to Magnolia Avenue or whatever it is. And, uh, we just wanted to let you know, we would certainly like for you to reconsider that because, uh, Mr. Lizer, John Lizer, was a pioneer Pearlander. He came here in 1910, and, uh, he contributed greatly to the city of Pearland. He, uh, and his wife had a restaurant they opened, they had a welding shop, he did haymaking, but also, he was the drainage commissioner for quite a number of years, and my memory i- is not that good, but it seems to me that when they opened the road, uh, the, one of the reasons that they gave for naming it John Lizer Road was because he had been instrumental in improving the drainage in that part of, uh, Pearland very, very much. He, he had improved the drainage. Uh, he had served on the Drainage Commission, and I don't know how, how many years he served there, but also, any of you who are in the, uh, Volunteer Fire Department will probably recall that, uh, the garage there where the first fire truck was built was called Monarch Garage. Uh, Mr. Lizer had started the garage, and his son-in-law, Clyde Oblinger, ran it. They built the first fire truck for the, uh, Volunteer Fire Department, and they had no place to store the truck, so they stored it there at the Monarch Garage for, uh, a number, I don't know how long, but for a while, they had, had to store it there at the Monarch Garage. And, uh, if you'd want to go ahead and change the name, we certainly would appreciate if you considered other places where you might use the name John Lizer, such as, uh, you have a lot of walking trails, and one of your walking trails might consider making it John Lizer Walking Trail or, um, whatever, but, uh, we would certainly like for you to reconsider, uh, canceling the name of the road from John Lizer to Magnolia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that's all the comments we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let us now move into item number four on our agenda. It is an often that we have a public hearing right in the middle of our agenda, but, uh, we, that's part of our agenda process. We're now in the consent agenda, and, uh, we have quite a few items here under the consent agenda, uh, all the way down to item G. Let's, Councilmember Carbone, if he will present this for our consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Approval of consent agenda items A through G, with the exception of B, D, and E.
Exception of what?
Boy, Dog, and Edward.
Boy, Dog, and?
Edward.
Edward, B, D, E. B, D, E. Sound like a fraternity. Okay, with that information in the record, does this have a motion second from council?
Thank you.
Did I hear a second? Secretary, we do have motion second, except for B, D, and E.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Moving into our agenda, item, uh, instead of agenda, item B. Uh... Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 1564, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. As we said at the last meeting, uh, we're, as time allows, going through and trying to standardize some of the, uh, street names, which, uh, have a tendency to have, over time, changed names back and forth, have different designations. Uh, I think we all agree it causes confusion of the traveling public and, uh, businesses, and also can inhibit emergency preparedness or emergency responses, uh, when people call in and aren't exactly clear where they're at. So, uh, first one we tackled is this Magnolia, which, uh, changes name several times. It's a little bit more complicated, as we have, uh, spoken to and are coordinating with Bressory County and City of Manville, this road actually runs through to, uh, and so, brought that recommendation to you, and, uh, council last time approved that. We, uh, council had made the amendment to, uh, take it, uh, that same Magnolia Parkway name all the way over to Liberty Drive, um, and, uh, as I mentioned at council earlier today, uh, there's lots of opportunities, I think, to provide some honorific, uh, uh, designations either, uh, in that same area in the park or something else, uh, if council so chooses and still, uh, keep with what council had, uh, directed at the last meeting. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. There are, there are several ways, I'm members, uh, Historical Society as well, I'm a little sensitive about, uh, the older generation that have had naming. We want to continue that name in some fashion that is recognizable and, and honored. And I was thinking on the, uh, as, um, uh, Mr. Mark was talking, uh, there's a former, long time ago, uh, commissioner in Bressory County that was, uh, here in Pearland area, named Mr. Massey, and, uh, he, the, uh, he built that road that's called Manville Highway. A lot of people don't realize that it's a concrete road, really, that, because it was, had to haul heavy stuff coming out of the oil field back on the 518. And, uh, so it was, uh, and, but, uh, as time went on, you know, uh, thoroughfares sometimes have the names changed because it's, uh, it's connected short section that has the name and another short section of that. You need a throughway when you're driving, you don't want a bunch of name changes on a long stretch. So, uh, we had this, uh, as you drive from Highway 35 to Manville Highway, which he built and, and part of that third, uh, Highway 518 as well, is, is a big sign on the side of the road that says Historical Massey Highway. And it's a really an attractive, I thought it was very especially from a historical standpoint. And the other options would be to do something like naming of, uh, a, one of the roadways in the, uh, re- uh, Independence Park that's under, that's under construction now, but I'll open this back to the council. Council, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I know we have some options to, to honor the name and the legacy. I think it would make sense to, as staff recommended, pull that back and not rename John Lizer, um, back to Pearland Parkway. Uh, I don't know if I'd feel right going from, from a street to a walking trail or, or something like that, and, um, so I'd, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, uh, make a motion to amend. Well, I guess, let me ask legal, is that something we can do on the, on this second and final reading?
Yes, that would be permissible at this time. You could go ahead and amend and, and take it. If, if the council so chooses, make a motion to amend, and then to go back to what the original recommendation was, you could do that this evening.
I'd like to go and make a motion to amend back to the, the boundary stopping at Pearland Parkway as, uh, staff originally presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So I was the one that, um, introduced the motion to, uh, modify the street as staff, um, uh, originally, um, presented it. Uh, staff's, um, uh, staff put in, uh, John Lizer, Pearland Parkway over to Liberty, uh, remaining as John Lizer. Um, I'm, uh, not to take away from the historical significance of, of Mr. Lizer and what he's done to the area, what he's done for the area, and, and the import he has to, to the community. I do believe that there is, uh, necessity to continue an honorarium for him, uh, but I do believe that, um, one road should have one name. Uh, we have, uh, we have too much confusion going on through our town. Anybody who's driven through the city of Houston, uh, knows that you can cross, you can drive on one lane or one road, never take a turn and be on four or five different roadways. It's very confusing, uh, for those who live on the street, it's very confusing for those who use, use the street. Um, I think this should be, set a precedent for what we need to do throughout the city, which is modify some of these street names so there's, uh, so there's, uh, the roads that are contiguous have a contiguous name.
I don't think when you have, uh, when you're talking mobility and, uh, you've got a roadway that runs from the east side of town all the way to west side of town, I think you ought to keep it the same name all the way through. And, uh, I think that, uh, uh, he can be, uh, I think he could be as well as, or maybe even better honored, uh, having something, uh, special to have his name on it, because we have, we don't have this in a number of other areas in our city. When you have a roadway, where you have four different names of, on the roadway, it gets, gets a little confusing trying to direct somebody to come out and visit with you. So I think it's, uh, I think it would be better if we put all the way from, um, all the way down to, uh, Liberty Drive and, uh, choose a, a very honorable way to recognize his contribution as a longtime historical citizen of Pearland. And there are a number of ways we could make it even more, more noticeable and more, more honorable.
And I think it's important to note that we offered the amendment, and the amendment passed in the previous meeting, uh, so at tha- at that point, we all agree, or not all of us, there was two, two dissents, but agreed to change, keep the name contiguous at that, uh, and upon the first reading.
Any other questions, council, council on this?
I had a question, maybe if staff just had a ballpark, if we did some type of a signage in memory of, is there any cost that we have in mind that is typical or?
Well, it'd be minimal. I mean, it's installation, we've got the sign plates, so it's minimus.
Okay. And I was thinking, just from the perspective of trying to find maybe some way to do it, not through taxpayer funding, but if we can get it sponsored or something like that, uh, I just want to know if that's an option that's reasonable to ask.
It's, it's fair idea. I think it'd probably be more trouble to chase after, frankly, so.
Okay. And also, I wanted to- And also, I wanted to just kind of address openly as well to the Pearland Historical Society and Lou for coming and just giving historical context, you know, not, we don't always get the opportunity to learn about these people that have contributed to our city, and so I really wanted to express my, yeah, my gratitude for giving us that perspective and that history, things like that.
He's been a longtime person of the historic Pearland Historical Society, and he's, he's Mr. Pearland. Any other question or comment from council? We do have motions second on the floor. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to two.
That's, that's the amendment.
That's the amendment.
Amendment is what now?
We have an amended motion.
Ready for amendment?
Have an amended motion?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Amendment motion passed, seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number D, councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2018-131, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, we get our second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Sorry.
Do you want staff report, sir?
So, this, this is an engineering award contract?
I'm sorry.
That's right. We good?
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
Staff report.
Yes, sir. So this is an engineering award for a project, as councils where we have a major capital improvements going on in the Orange and Old Alvin area. For sake of efficiency, these have been broken down into a few different units. We've got the Orange Street and Linwood drainage and roadwork that's nearing completion with some touch-up works. And then the original Old Alvin work, which is substantive widening of Old Alvin from basically just north of Orange all the way up to McCard Road, that also has a large drainage improvement element to that. And then we, in parallel, also have identified this project for a trail, a mobility improvement along Old Town Ditch. And if, get that staff, there you go. So that's the green that's in there, and this links up pathways, and it's going to give us a very nice, I call it a nature trail in some ways, along the ditch, providing some pedestrian and bicycle access that's not right alongside the road as most of our other pathways. So, and that's going to tie in from Old Alvin all the way over to Main Street. And then as part of that, the, the trail is going to be on the north side of the ditch by necessity. We identified putting a pedestrian bike bridge across Old Town Ditch, that yellow there, and that's planned, that's going to connect in the city's Hunter Park. Hunter Park's been in the parks plan since about 2010, and working towards activating that and getting used there. I believe it's on some historic designations for the state, this linear park, provides some opportunities for improvement and getting traffic there, usage, and then also would connect in the Old Town area. So altogether, this all connects nicely and gives us, sets up for a lot of opportunities down the road. So this is for the design work for that to get in, and that's been talked about in some of the Thursday packets, the material you see in the agenda packet for some time to pull this all together. That's all I have, sir.
I complete that. Council, any question to comment on this item? For Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. What are the plans in the near term for Hunter Park? They have the long, narrow strip, and I assume right now the access is off of Orange. So are we going to put some sort of trail in the park to get back to the bridge?
Right. So this will obviously allow you to do exactly that. If you've been by there, you know that, you know, Hunter Park sits there. I was at original dedication for the Hunter Park, you know, years ago after it started. And so this gets us, you know, the north side of that. I'll let Mr. Orlia kind of talk about what we see as the plans and, you know, timing for the, getting the rest of that done, after we get, take advantage of this opportunity.
Dr. Orlia.
Sorry?
It's Dr. Orlia.
Dr. Orlia, thanks, sir.
Thank you, councilmember, for both being here and that. The plans for Hunter Park are very much in align with what the Pearland Historical Society shared tonight. They've been a big part of the vision. In 2008, this council actually helped change the name from Orange Street City Park to the Robert L. and Julia Martin Hunter Park, based on their contributions and significance to the city of Pearland. And during that time, we started the process of getting the historical designation. During that time, the Antiquities, Division of Antiquities of the State of Texas, had to get that right. They're pretty particular about what you can do to it, so it had to stay fallow during those times. Now that we've gotten that, the hope was to wait for some type of connectivity. Mr. Upton's group's been able to provide that now, and hopeful with this connectivity, we're going to provide southern connectivity out towards Orange Street because of the main corridor going through Grand Boulevard, which we hope to in the future use for festivities and get the farmer's market back over there. So we're hoping to have this be an entire area to revitalize some of the multimodal transportation that's there. The plans for that park specifically, we're looking to kind of take a look back at old Pearland and plant some, some pear orchards and that types of things, and sitting amenities along a sidewalk, so that the folks that traditionally have lunch in the First United Methodist area, which is pretty crowded at lunch, could maybe go down there and enjoy some shade and enjoy some lunch, and take a look back at some interpretive signage and some pear trees.
Any idea on timing? When do we have that budget in?
The amenities for it can come out of special funds, so what we're waiting for right now is the connectivity. That's going to be the catalyst to kick that off. Without the connectivity east-west and the north-south to get from Orange, it would kind of not make a lot of sense to put those there. So once this capital project comes to a conclusion, we're ready to install some of those components.
Okay. And I know we had a, I guess, a recent shooting there at, at the Walmart. Are we concerned about safety? Because if, if I live anywhere in that area, I'm, I'm thinking, right now, it's, it's, if you want to, you've got to make, you have to be intentional to get to the end of North Galveston or Isla or any of those. I don't know. Have we thought through that?
We have, we have a comprehensive program that we work with Chief Spire's team on. So any site that's identified as an active-use park gets, I can't think of the word, forgive me, chief, for it, but updated or more frequent security checks. Hunter Park does get security checks now, I'd say maybe a few times a day, in our active parks, those become a dozen or so times a day. So we work with chief's team to make sure that the active or in-use sites are on their radar, I guess physically and metaphorically. And then every week, we get an updated report, and if there's any type of criminal activity there, we know what types of deterrence to put in place.
If I, if I can just add, I would argue too, that getting the park activated so the public can use these things is a, in itself, a deterrent against nays and ears out there. You know, this map doesn't show up, but Zalinski Park is in the schools or to the south, so I think this has the opportunity to pull all that together, you know, pathways, you know, showing the improved values, and, and people want to get next to those and, and, you know, this, get some of that traffic, at least give people the opportunity that are out with families or children to get off at some point from the Main Street, 35 corridor, and get over here, so.
I guess just to clarify, this item is 90K, the next item's 190, so we're spending $280,000 for a pedestrian bridge, and that's, that's where the skepticism comes in.
The, I guess a, a bridge is going to, you know, not be, is, is going to be more than the flat work and, but once it's in, you know, then it offers up all these other opportunities, because otherwise you may have Hunter Park, which is going to be, you know, not inaccessible, but very, not very easy, especially on the north side there.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll first comment that I do live in the area. I'm, I'm around this, around this park quite often. Obviously, it's, it's still fallow, so it's not used right now. I think, me and others that live in the area would certainly like to see some more use out of it. I just, I can't make sense out of the bridge. I certainly agree that those that live south of it, or work south of it, or, or utilize the land south of it, would want to go and use Hunter Park or a place to have outdoor lunch. You know, some of the people live in the area, if we add some amenities out there, may want to take their kids out there, or want to, they want to just get out of the house and get some exercise. I just don't see any of them crossing, crossing the bridge to go to Walmart. You know, I, there's two other connectivity points, once this trail gets in place, on 35 and on Old Alvin, I just don't see where the bridge is worth the investment. Certainly want to encourage Hunter Park to continue to move forward. I just don't see the bridge being a worthy investment.
Any other question, council, from this point?
Yes, Mayor.
More?
So I know this was tied to a lot of other projects, so what happens if we don't use this money? Or the construction of the bridge?
You know, it's sort of a capital project, so if we don't do the bridge, I mean, the other ones are funded, so this isn't going to hurt anything else. Can tell you, I think we've issued this tributaries obligation that were used for Orange and Linwood, but, you know, we'd have, those are usually designated as, generically as streets and sidewalks, so we could program that. We don't have another project right off. But we have gone through and, you know, as council aware had this identified, and so had gone through and worked for getting the quotations and the work and tee-in up for tonight, so.
Councilmember Owens?
Yeah, and Mayor, you may remember this when this first came up, and we talked Larry Marcock into putting the first $500 into it. He was councilmember during that time. I'm, this bridge, that's a prefab, just sit in place.
Councilman Owens, this contract is to be able to design that bridge and put that forth, so hopefully, yes, it would be more of a semi prefab to an extent, but that would be the design portion that is necessary, that we're asking for award tonight on, to design this.
No piling or anything, it's just mud seals or whatever you're going to do to it on the, either end?
What's that? Oh, yeah. It'll have a foundation. There'll be a foundation and pilings necessary to hold that bridge structure, correct. It's just, this is the first step in that, to design, do the geotech, and determine what the needs are.
Okay. There was some concern when we first talked about this years ago on there about people getting there, and there was some discussion about a bridge there, and, of course, it was a different outlay then of what it was. So this is just going to be for the residents who live in that area? There'd be no parking, anything at all?
I think Chris could talk to that. I think there is parking at the, south of Hunter's, and there's parking, obviously, further south by Zalinski, but...
I think that's going to address some of the parking that's available along Grand Boulevard, I think is going to be available to some of our Old Town residents. But I, I think from looking at some of the multimodal studies that, that we've looked at internally, as well as those that HGAC has put out, if you look further to the north and the east, the subdivisions that are, that are really adjacent, those are going to be the Creekside, some of those Greater Highland Glen areas, and those neighborhoods, the things that most of those recreational amenities lack is shade. And anybody that's been outside for the past few days knows that that's a precious commodity, especially when you've got little ones out there with you. So the park, even though initially it might not have anything but shade, we're having a lot of residents that would opt for shade and a picnic table over a playground any day. So I think the draw is going to be from both the north and the south, and so I think the, the thought that perhaps that north-to-south transit across the trail, or rather, the bridge may not be necessary, it's going to be a huge boon to those folks that can't get around, otherwise if they're using the trail system on their bikes, because I know personally with, with my son, I wouldn't want to go turn around on 35. I think this is the safest mechanism we can put in place to connect people to the parks, connect Pearlanders to what we have to offer for Pearlanders.
Yeah.
If that answers it, Councilmember Owens, I'm sorry.
Only concern I had is not having a parking area, and I don't want to see a bunch of cars lined up and down east Orange and impact the residents that live there on there. I think, you know, you're right, to put some stuff out there in the park with an Go Set or barbecue pits or, or whatever to utilize a park for the residents around there.
Yes, sir. What we found is, starting around in between Plum and Orange where the Montessori School is, and even further south down that area where the Boulevard starts, we don't see anything that tells us that residents wouldn't want to walk that distance. So that, the, the street parking that's always readily available, as well as that parking in front of the Montessori School that usually is only taken up during drop-off and pickup time, I think that would work incredibly well for that park.
Okay. Any other question or comment this point?
Do we have a preliminary number for the bridge construction?
Currently, right now, very rough estimate is somewhere in the neighborhood of about $400,000 with prefab, et cetera.
So with this contract and the construction, we'd be looking at about a half million dollars to get a bridge, Hunter's Park from the trail on the north side?
Potentially early on right now.
I think for illustration purposes, if you were to drive down McLean and look at the bridge that's on, crosses Mary's Creek, it's Centennial Park to the adjacent park next to Ryan Acres, that's a good example of what that bridge might look like when it's all said and done. And that's a prefab bridge that was put on pilings there along Clear Creek, so that's a good example of what it might look like.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think there's good uses for, for bridges. Further south on Old Alvin, we have a pedestrian bridge that crosses, crosses the creek by that school. I think there's a necessity for pedestrian bridges. I just don't see, I, I just don't, I can't find a way to justify half million dollars to keep people from walking another half block down 35. I mean, that's a lot, it's a lot of money to spend, and I just don't, again, living in the area, utilizing, I'll, I'll probably utilize this park, or at least I'm within the customer service area of this park, I could never see myself using it, using that bridge. Not enough to justify a half million dollar investment.
Any other question or comment on this?
I just want to follow up on what council. If, if we don't do the bridge, can the money be used to put in some kind of amenities there early on? People to use it in the neighborhood?
We, we certainly could do that. We feel like that this is a priority at this particular time. It's not just, you know, for people going from the, that side over to the opposite side to get to Walmart. As, as Dr. Orlia mentioned, you've got the Highland Glen Trail that goes all the way up to Pearland Parkway, and ultimately will have a connection along Clear Creek where people will be able to access, ultimately, they'll be able to access Clear Creek Trail. So I think what we have here is the beginnings of an initial plan that will move people in and around the community, and we think this is a good expenditure of these funds at this time.
Since you brought up that on the Clear Creek, about all the tributaries that we have goes into Clear Creek, and I think, you were at the meeting the other day, on the different projects that are going to be done, will that make any difference? With, well, what I'm saying is that with the tributaries, I think that there's some that it's going to be work done on in addition to the Clear Creek. That drains in there, is there anything that's going to affect this town ditch through there? Any widening or anything like that?
As part of the overall Clear Creek Army Corps of Engineer project?
Yeah.
I don't think that that includes anything specific for town ditch, and we've been working with DD4 on their ultimate width needs for town ditch, so that this trail is compatible with that and in an easement within that. And so DD4 doesn't have any plans outside of what, what right-of-way they've got at this point.
Mr. Little?
I, I kind of agree with Councilman Perez. It's hard to justify half a million dollars for a bridge. I don't see that much pedestrian traffic in that area. You know, it seems more like a wish list item than a, than a needs list, and I think the half a million could be better spent somewhere else like... the half a million could be better spent somewhere else, like retiring some dead.
Any other question or comment from the council? We, hearing none, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
Doesn't make much difference, does it?
No.
Motion fails seven to zero.
Moving in our consent agenda, to item number E, Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, Resolution R 2018-130, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report?
So this is related, this is the Green Line East-West, and this takes, provides off-road access for pathway, pedestrian bicyclists, between Old Alvin and 35, on the north side of the ditch, and we've got these proposals, and recommending to DVL for the $190,000.
Council, any question or comment?
Mayor, I pulled this in case we didn't move forward the bridge, does, does the fact that that was just voted down change this item at all?
Let Dr. Arlia say, but I don't think so. I mean, it still provides, as you can see, if you get the map back up there, you know, very positive, and it connects the pathway to the east that's in place, straight across, lets people avoid the Public Works Center, which is very busy there at the corner, and access East-West, and have plans to, you know, go further, so I, in my mind, this can't stand on its own and should.
All right, thank you. I guess, if, on the, you know, since we're still talking about this trail in this area, if there was a more economical solution to cross, besides a half million dollar bridge, be able to walk on, I'd be all in favor of that. I think it's just the price tag with everything we're seeing in budget, at least, that's my opinion.
I'd second that, I mean, we were going to spend about 50% of it, what it cost, to construct this entire trail from Old Alvin to 35, to design the bridge, and then we would have spent double the cost to construct the bridge. And I do think with the, with the budget being what it is, we just need to allocate that money somewhere else, more of a want than a need. But I do think that this, this portion of the project definitely needs to move forward.
I would have to agree, and not only that, if, if we've got this money earmarked, and we're talking about expanding trails, then let's use it somewhere else to expand the trail further on, opposed to, I mean, this is going to be $190,000 for this stretch of sidewalk or trail here, I mean, and we could do that three times over somewhere else.
Any other question or comment? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
That information tucked away, and taken care of, let's now move to item number eight on our agenda, which is new business. Councilmember Reed, would you present item number one for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, Resolution Number R 2018-133, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have, have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little's absent from the chamber. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
This is a for sure way for us to get you not to talk a lot.
We go, Mayor?
I think we work this one.
Yeah, we'll work this one.
Test. Like it's a master's hand there. Are you familiar with this piece of equipment?
A little bit.
Okay. You know, one of the things I think is very special about today is, not only do we have a chance to vote, either in favor of, or not in favor of, congratulating you on the service you've had over the years. Let me tell you about a resolution that we did sign, City of Pearland, where as the here and after, named as unselfishly contributed time, talent, and energies to serve the people of the City of Pearland, which is true, and where such contributions become a part of the foundation upon which this city stands, which is true, and whereas the Member of the City Council, and the City Council of Bexar County, Harris, and Fort Bend Counties, State of Texas, deemed it fitting and proper to recognize the service and contribution of Councilmember Keith Ordno, Councilmember 2012, 2018, Mayor Protem in 2014. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved and signatures, here and to affixed and attest, and bear witness, that the hearing and the people of this city do gratefully acknowledge that service and that contribution, and is passed on the 23rd day of July 2018. And let me read the names of some of these, you'd have to look at the printed name, because I couldn't list, I couldn't tell you who the signatures are. Mayor Tom Reed, Councilmember Number One, Tony Carbone, Councilmember Position Two, Derek Reed, Councilmember Position Three, Gary Moore, Councilmember Position Four, Adrian Hernandez, Councilmember Number Five, J. David Little, I didn't know about the J. part, and Position Number Six, Trent Perez, and it was signed and authenticated by Young Lawfrin, and Councilmember Woody Owens, Position Number Seven. And I'd like to present this to you, and maybe with appropriate people who can get a picture taken of you receiving it. Keith Ordno, Mayor Protem, main plate, so they don't know who you were. And when you walked into the council, into the lobby out there, there always had pictures on the wall. This picture hung up there, we never had any vermins in this building, and I'd like to present, for you to make sure that if things are appearing on speedy little legs, would you bring that back, let us borrow it back? And we can't get you get away, how about this? Presented by the City of Pearland, and the City Council, Keith Ordno, Mayor Protem 2014, in recognition of his distinguished service as Councilmember 2012, 2018. I have a box to put in, too. Would you like to make a few comments?
If I got up and clapped during Consent Agenda, would y'all have sat down?
Just a second here, since you're now a citizen of Pearland, would you please support your podium? Give us your name and address, and you've got three minutes to make your comments.
Well, it always took more than three minutes, I think, but Keith Ordno, 2244, North Austin. No, seriously, thank y'all. Thanks to these people sitting over here that still call me family, thankfully, honestly, they're the most important people. They're the ones that remind us that we are people, that we're no different than anybody sitting in this audience when we're up there. We've just been given a responsibility, and, and that was probably one of the most helpful things in the six years that I was honored to be up here. Some of my best memories, some of my worst memories are up there. And, you know, I've always said that, that that's what makes memories, that's what makes life fun. If everything was fun, or everything was terrible, nobody would want to do it, so thank y'all, thank everyone else I've served up here. There are stories I would love to tell, more importantly, there's comments I would love to make about what y'all have already discussed, and I'll, I'll save those for later, or just go drink a whiskey, like I told everybody I was going to when I got off council, and forget what y'all have just said. But thank you. More importantly, what the six years taught me and showed me is the staff we have in Pearland from the top to the bottom, I, I will put the staff up against anybody, and thank y'all for the work y'all do every day. As a council member, I hope I gave some guidance, but that's all I did, the credit goes to the staff that actually makes it happen. Thank y'all, thank you for your service, have a wonderful night.
Hey Keith, I do have one story about TML in Fort Worth, if you'd like me to say it.
Oh, that was an interesting one.
It's time to move on.
Yeah, there's always rumors already on the street about February 19.
Next item, Mayor.
Keith, you done good, I appreciate you, and your family is, should be very proud of his, of his service, AKA Benny. It's always sad to see a long time council member leave, but he did a yeoman's job, and did a great, great deal of positive service for our community, and I think it's a very special one, that citizens steps up and spend the time that he has spent working on the council issues for the city and citizens, and the things he worked on, I think it's to be, he's be highly committed, and his service is greatly appreciated. Moving in our agenda on the new business, item number two, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, First Read and Orders, Number 1562, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report?
Thank you, sir. We did conduct the public hearing for this, and this is the council's prerogative to amend the budget for tax increment reinvestment zone number two, which essentially is the Shadow Creek area. What this allows is for the city to be eligible for funding for public improvements, a fire station, new library, sidewalks, park, and park improvements. These will be part of our capital improvement program, that would either have to be funded through other means, debt, or other means for getting accomplished, or not happen as quickly, or as large as we can do with this TERS. This does not extend the life of the TERS, as was noted, and this is from, does not change the property tax rate for people in the TERS, it's just how they're directed, and so, very excited frankly, to be able to offer this up and do this. The TERS has been extremely successful, the valuation when it was frozen was $7 million, today it stands close, just over $2 billion. So this has been a huge engine, it's a very big positive for Pearland, for Alvin ISD, Bexar and Fort Bend Counties, overall, and so, this is just another cherry on top, if you will, that allows us to do these improvements, and get these things done.
Any other question or comment from the City Council on this item? Hearing none, we have motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Moving in our new business agenda, to item number three, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, Resolution Number R 2018-126, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion? Did I, did I hear a second?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, we're not in discussion.
So this is a parcel that's up for a tax sale, it's a landlocked piece, just east of wagon trail, parcel that's been put up, and the process is that county puts it up for sale, takes offers. The city had opportunity to refute, or deny consent for the disposition, the sale of that property. We went through, you may recall, process where at first we were looking to try to acquire it for a public purpose, and then retrenched and decided not to do that, so now it's just going back, and we'll be able to go back for a private sale.
Council, have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary, we have motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number four, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, Resolution Number R 2018-127, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report?
So we have a, another major capital improvement, a road improvement for Max Road. This is a funded 80% from federal funds, but blow through HGC, the Regional Planning Agency. When the bids came in for this, it was significantly higher than estimated, that typically would have been, per the agreements borne by the city alone, the increase in costs, but thanks to the diligence of Trina President and staff, went back to HGC, and were able to secure agreement for splitting the costs, and so, as part of that, rather than just amend, they decided they wanted to substitute in their new form agreement, since this is old, dates back, and so this is killing off the old funding agreement, and replacing it with a new one, that meets the current standards, and provides for the funding that is quite advantageous to the city.
Council, have any question or comment on this item? Owens?
I think this is a good deal for us. I don't know, Trent, if you went back and you've talked to Text Dot here lately, but with the increase in the oil prices, Prop One, they're getting additional billion dollars in Texas Department of Transportation. And I was with the Commissioner two weeks ago, I guess it was, and he says they're going to be funding a lot of the additional roadways that they have here, so I don't know if that's coming through the HGAC, but it should be able to expedite some of the other work that we may be looking at, to be able to get it on the book center. They got quite a bid, and I didn't know if there's any turn back money of other cities that are turning back money, that don't have jobs ready or funding.
So I think my understanding, working with HGC and Text Dot through the tip processes, is that there's going to be a tip call for project later this summer, and that there will be additional funds available, but, and, so there's two things, one is category two, which Text Dot has discretion over that, and it doesn't go through the MPO, so that's one way we're looking to push the FM 518 project, if they can fund it there. Text Dot has also expressed a willingness to sponsor that in the, in the, as a tips supplemental process as well. The additional funds coming in through Prop One and Prop Seven...
The additional funds coming in through Prop 1 and Prop 7, there's not a whole lot of additional revenue that will be awarded through the tip process this time because when we did our last tip call for project three years ago, revenues were underperforming from Prop 1 and Prop 7 due to the economy at the time. So, you know, we looked at it over a long period of time, we ought to see this kind of revenue projections. So, we saw a dip with the call for, since the call for projects three years ago, now we're seeing those revenues come back. So, it kind of has evened out over the course of time so far. But, if we continue to see the economy perform and oil perform, we'll have additional revenues in the future available through those programs.
Commissioner Austin, his last words to me is to pass the message along and not to be bashful of going back to TexDOT locally and talking to them about additional funds.
Any other question for council?
Yes, Mayor, I just have one. No man's an island, but I don't think that there's enough credit that can be given to Mr. Epperson and the work that he does for the city of Pearland. Being able to go back and get this funding, being able to be so competitive with the tip funds and bring value to the city of Pearland, we would have countless number of projects that would not have gotten off the ground had he not been aggressive, use the system as he knows it so well, be able to find the funds for Pearland that we just were not getting through our normal avenues of revenue. So, Mr. Epperson, I just want to take the time to thank you for all the effort that you've put in here. I hope that the other council members and the citizens of Pearland realize how much value we have by your employment and your work here. And this is just a small measure of all the work that you've done and all your staff for all that they do to help support these efforts. So, I personally really appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Any other comment from council?
I'll just make a snide comment. Is that FM 518 or is that Broadway?
Stay tuned.
I believe they need to tell us, Secretary, that we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone's absent from the chamber. Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number five, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2018-128, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Sir, we have a need to mail out about 32,000 paper bills a month. We have a mailhouse that does that for us more efficiently. We put this out for bid and this is a renewal of that contract and so.
I think we're on item five, the beautification.
Oh, geez, sorry. Apologize. So, this is the Pearland Economic Development Corporation's identified and had in their plans a number of years, a strategy for corridor improvements. We've seen some of the successes for that taking hold. We, obviously the Lower Kirby District has seen some of those features, also have the entry features that have been well received. One of the, we're also interested in reinvesting in our established areas and corridors, that is Main Street, State Highway 35. The state of Texas, TexDOT came through and did the road improvement, that was very basic, road widening and got through that. Now, we have identified and council and PDC and others have seen the wisdom of going back and to improve that and give that a good face to the city and help our brand. And so, we've got, actually the PDC wanted to do the entirety, we'd originally talked about doing it in phases, but this would take it all the way from Beltway 8 to 518, Broadway, whatever we're calling it. And this would provide that substantial terms of the improvement, thousands of trees and bushes and really soften and beautify that. And so, when people come through, they know that they're somewhere that's got to cut above the rest and high standards and so this will get us well on our way to doing that. This was a competitive seal proposals, it was evaluated and have to look at the overall value and likelihood of success for the contract and that's why recommending landscape art in this case.
Council have any question or comment on this item?
Matt, if anything, tell us the monument piece of this one, is there anything additional? Is this on the corners and so forth? There'll be monuments at both the entryway on both sides when you come over from Beltway 8 and then we'll also have a few monuments at the 518-35 intersection, Broadway. Sorry.
Are these going to be this, excuse me, are these going to be the same what we have at Cullen and Pearland Parkway?
Yes, sir. The ones at, and the ones at 518 and 35 at that intersection will be a little bit smaller.
But, they'll look the same?
Yes, sir.
And do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, one thing I would like to say on Pearland Parkway, from when we first did that and did all the landscaping and everything on it, we're absent 39 trees out there. Is there any way that we could come back and plant some more trees out there? We've got 39 missing on Pearland Parkway, the way that they were staggered in through there, but they're missing right now. And so, I just wonder if we might be able to come in and do something on that to replant some of the trees out there in that area.
Well, that's not up for tonight, but we can look at that report back, you know, Thursday package, so.
Any other question or comment?
Yes, Mayor. Item related to the bid, so we've got a 6.2 million proposal with the alternates, the alternates are 1, 3 and 5. I'd just like to ask the $200,000 savings for the hydro mulch and the Lewis sod, can you expand on that, why we're choosing to go with sod as opposed to hydro mulch? And then I got a follow-up question after that.
You know, I'll let the landscape architects talk, I mean, it's really a preference thing, but I think with the ditches and the slope of the ditches, that I think in a lot of places it would be hard for hydro mulch if, you know, we get rain and those types of events. And the sod obviously just looks nicer. And so, if we're trying to go through and make the corridor, you know, look good, we prefer to go with sod.
I'd like to explore that further. We use hydro mulch for detention ponds on a regular basis and so long as the slope doesn't exceed three to one or four to one, where the hydro mulch will be fine. You know, maybe there's a compromise where they put in sod for the first foot behind any curb and then hydro mulch behind that. It's $200,000 is a big item for sod when hydro mulch, in my opinion, for this type of use would work fine.
It's something we could look at. I know TexDOT I think prefers for us to use sod, but, you know, I think it gives the corridor a better look and feel to have sod as much as is the slope.
This is a project that's been long overdue, I tell you, I think it's going to be quite impressive when it's completed and it's been one of the things that we've tried to hide that over the years and it stands out too much. But, Council, any other question or comment on this item?
How long does it take for hydro mulch to grow? Say that in the mic.
About a month, month and a half.
Is that, or is our landscape architect or vendor, anybody here, could you give us some?
Both landscape art and Brandon with Clark Condon are here.
You go up to them.
I also think in many areas where, you know, you have no mowing or anything taking place next to them, it'll be harder to get the hydro mulch to grow because obviously of the weeds and stuff that are along the corridor.
My name's Brandon Whitaker, Representative, Clark Condon Associates, Landscape Architects. The idea behind the hydro mulch.
Could you move closer to the microphone? I think we could all hear.
Yes, sir. We prefer the sod as an instant impact, specifically on 35, your front door coming down. It's going to be easier to sustain sod in this front door area. The slopes aren't steep to where we could use hydro mulch, it's just a instant impact and that's what we're going for. We do have irrigation. The biggest issues when it comes to hydro mulch is the month, month and a half, depending on storms and having to reapply, so on and so forth.
I might add the.
Would you tell us who you are?
Jay Williams.
I know who you are, but the tape recorder doesn't.
I'm Jay Williams, I'm with Landscape Art. And one of the difficulties with this particular project is that if you have a detention pond, you have a very large area that allows for pretty easy growth. This particular project has a lot of very narrow strips so that it's, you're talking about trying to grow grass in relatively narrow areas along a roadway, which is not conducive toward germination and establishment of the sod. The other thing that I might mention is, is that although this is intended to be a one-year project and we hope to be started in the next month or so, if there were delays for any reason, seasonal problems or flooding or whatever, trying to establish Bermuda after Labor Day is very, very difficult. And in any circumstance, in this particular situation on a major thoroughfare, it just makes it that much more difficult to do. I'm really open to either way and I understand $200,000 is a lot of money, but the chance of success goes much higher with sod as opposed to going with hydro mulch.
I would just say for $200,000, we can go a couple of times with the hydro mulch. It's not, the hydro mulch is easy to apply, those guys are readily available. I mean, I know you can't seed Bermuda, you're going to put in a, you know, hydro mulch with, I think like a rye or something like that, if I'm not mistaken, and then you wait for the Bermuda to take over, if I'm not mistaken.
If it is in the summer, which presumably it would be, we would go with Bermuda. There would not be, there would not be rye. Rye is a winter grass and it would conceivably increase the maintenance cost in trying to establish it. The, this is a decision that could be delayed, I would say that as well, so that, I don't know about the actual management of the contract, but this decision will not need to be made until the next spring. So, if you wished to revisit this at that time, you could, in either direction.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that and we just, you know, $200,000 to just save us about a month and a half of grass. And not to over-trivialize it, I know, I know your expertise, you're trying to impart more importance to the difference, but generally, that's why most development projects, they only, they put in, they put in the foot behind the curb for stormwater pollution prevention to prevent the silt from coming across the curb, but they just hydro mulch behind that and they let it, let it grow on its own. I think it's worth exploring, I think if there's a way we can, we can try and save $200,000 city of Pearland and wait a month and a half, I'd be, I'd be for that. I guess, staff, we'd look for guidance, what do y'all, do you want us to amend this motion to include alternate four or do you think that y'all can move forward to the contract as is and then come back to us later and give us a recommendation of whether hydro mulch can be a good add alternate as a cost savers, cost-saving change order in the future?
It's included in the contract now, so it would be a deduct. So, I mean, I suppose we could wait and see, maybe do the medians definitely in sod and then maybe look at some of the, maybe the entryway in sod and then look along the corridor, depending upon the time of year and see if that's council's wishes.
I'm comfortable as moving with the contract as is, have the item in there if we need it and then we can deduct change order in the spring if we, if we find a way of saving, a way your hands aren't tied. But, I'd like us to explore it, I'd like us to follow up in the future.
Somewhat related to this question with the businesses that are going to be on this stretch, have we already begun conversations to bring them forward to give them the opportunity to meet the new aesthetic standard once this is completed, these improvements?
All these improvements will be made in the public right of way, so it won't be on private property. And we sent out notices to all the businesses probably two years ago when we started all this, had a public meeting, wasn't very well attended, but we did have a public meeting with probably, you know, 40 or 50 people there to see what these improvements are. And these improvements are almost identical to the boards that we showed council back a year and a half ago when we started the design work.
Okay, I just didn't know if there were any other opportunities to kind of maybe bring them forward because I don't want to point any businesses out in particular, but sometimes driving down that stretch of 35, I just, we're spending money to make the aesthetics of landscaping and stuff look better. If you look just slightly beyond that, I just don't know that it, you know, meets that standard and.
And I would agree and that would be one of the reasons we would do these improvements is that I think you'll see hopefully the overall look and feel of the entire neighborhood, you know, over time, that this will help to make improvements and help to encourage more quality development over time. This is going to be one step of many steps that we take that, and there won't be one day when you go out there and say, boy, it's perfect and looks great, but I think over time, you'll really see that there's a significant drastic improvement over time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question for council at this one? Carbone?
Just a comment, but over time, as in a month and a half, we can have, save 200K in grass. But, I mean, all joking aside, if I'm hesitant in leaving it in there just because it's extra 200K that we may or may not see, but if everybody else is, I'm fine leaving it, but if there is an opportunity to shave that back with a change order, I would appreciate it.
Let me do this, let me offer an amendment to approve the contract with the alternate number four included.
Second.
You're offering an amendment to the, to the motion?
Yes, sir. So, alternate work item number four is the deduct for the hydro mulch and Lewis sod. So, we all, if I alter, offer that as an alternative, then we're amending, we're approving the contract with the alternate item four included as part of the contract, along with alternates 1, 3 and 5.
Okay, do we have a second on that item?
Yes.
We do have a second on that item. Okay.
So, just to be clear, you're taking the sod out?
Staff report on this.
I'm presenting to the council to approve whether they want to include the sod or not. Hadn't been voted on yet.
Well, he's asking though, what is it that you're saying? You're saying that?
Alternate, alternate work item five, which was presented as a work alternate for the contract, was hydro mulch and Lewis sod, minus $201,280.
Don't they ask, is that an all or none, Matt? Because you talked about doing sod in some places in the medians and then behind the sidewalk. Would this cut it out completely so we wouldn't even have that work item in there?
It'd be hydro mulching instead of sodding.
Everywhere.
Well, whatever was included in the work item. I mean, it was offered as an alternate for a reason, so I don't know if it was complete deduct, if it was portions of, there's not enough write-up in here. It's $200,000 saving.
We offered it as an alternate, obviously, to have flexibility in case we needed to cut costs depending on where our bids came in. Obviously, the preference would be to do the sod, so that's why it was in the bid. This is the deduct to take it out if we chose not to do sod. Brandon, is that correct? That is correct.
Roughly, what do you think a compromise would equate to if we did a half and half? Do you think it'd be $100,000 savings if we did medians?
The equation, as far as the math is concerned, is pretty easy. If we do half of it, it'll be $100,000 deduct. The question would be where would be the appropriate areas to do sod and that, I don't know, we won't know that until we would get into with the consultants and the other folks as to where would be appropriate, whether that number is 50% or 30% or 70%. I have no way of judging until people start drawing it out on the plans. I want to mention one more thing, I know that a month and a month and a half has been mentioned, but. I know that a month and a month and a half has been mentioned, but to have coverage at the level that would be considered appropriate for a playground or a detention basin is one thing, but it will not be sod in a month and a half. It will take a, a good growing season before it will actually look like sod.
Have we defined the alternate pretty well?
I believe so.
Do we have a second on the alternate?
So, can you clarify what, what your, your motion is?
Motion is to include alternate work item number four as presented in the agenda packet, which is a deduct for 200,000, $1,000, $201,280 to replace hydro mulch in lieu of sod. We had a motion as a second, but that's, that's the clarification of what we're, of what the, what the amendment is.
This comes at the end, so like you're saying, you've got a year to figure it out.
What's that?
You said that, that the sod's coming right at the end of the project? So staff has some time to figure it out. If you want to come back and say, hey, we really need 20% or 30% sod, then so be it. But as of right now, the motion is, we're going to go with hydro mulch and save 200K.
Wouldn't be the first contract they came back with a change order.
Yeah.
Okay. If everybody understands the motion, alternate, we do have motion, second on floor for an alternate, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Do they have amended motion on the floor? Is there any discussion on that particular item at this point? I believe we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Moving to item number six on our agenda, Councilmember Owens, would you present?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-134, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second we're discussing. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. Again, this is a renewal of the printing contract for water billings, about 30,000. We send out every month of these, and this is inclusive of printing and the mailhouse distribution flows.
Council, any question or comment on this item?
Is there any way to get these bills more accurate? I mean...
They're accurate, you know, we've reported out, we, and council knows and know, by and large, the bills are for water that's used, they're for rates that have been established and that reflect what it takes to keep the system up. You know, we do on occasion have meters out of the 30,000 accounts we have that fail, and so we investigate those. There was a case where we went longer than we targeted, we're going to fix that, went 38 days, but that was still for water used, and then that gets caught up the next ones. So the bills are, for 30,000 accounts, pretty, pretty accurate.
Looking back through my records, I had an issue with my mom's bill in May of '17, and it seems like we're still getting input from citizens that are similar issues over a year later. So I, I hear what you're saying, I appreciate what you're saying, I don't know that everybody in Pearland believes what you're saying.
Well, I appreciate that as well, but, you know, the, everybody is a broad brush, as you know, and we answer those as best we can, and we're endeavoring to explain that better and better.
Councilmember Moore, you're trying to...
No, I'm just, I was just going to say, if Councilmember Carbone didn't bring that up, I was...
Stole your comment, huh? Any other question or comment?
Yes, Mayor, refocus on the printing aspect of the bills. So this is the, this is a renewal of the contract. I think I asked this before, but maybe just for the purposes of, of education, the reason we're going with the company out of Monroe as opposed to many, a few of the printing houses that are here around Pearland is, is what exactly?
This was bid out, it's a big contract and...
Let me respond to that. Initially in 2011, we bid this out, and we had 13 vendors. At that particular time, we went with the vendor that we're recommending here this evening. Then we rebid it in 2016, and at that time, we had five vendors. And out of those five vendors, we had one from Alabama, one from Texas, one from Louisiana, excuse me, three from Texas, and then one from Florida. The one that, this particular one from Monroe was the third lowest bidder, but it was the lowest bidder out of the ones that were, all of Texas was higher than that. And we had previous experience with them, two previous bid cycles, plus some of our neighbors had, neighboring cities had experience with the same company, and they performed admirably during that time period. Therefore, we felt like, based on their proposal, that they were the best and most qualified firm, and therefore, we made the recommendation back in 2016. And this is a third and final renewal. We can bring this back to you again, but this is just consistent with our initial bid.
Thank you, John.
Oh, Owens?
Yeah, that's, I've gotten a couple of emails today from people, I was wondering, I guess it's going to Dallas now? Water bill, when you fill it out, it's going to Dallas or somewhere?
It's, it's a mailing company, and then they print it, and that's what we're talking about here, printing. The bill is mailed out through Dallas postmark and then comes back to Pearland area. But again, any and all of the vendors that we've been on, they may have, that supplied quotes, they could have done the exact same thing. We have a specific rate that they pay for mailing, we have a bulk rate, and this is actually for the cost to print the bills.
I guess on some of the confusion, what I heard today was, if I got a problem to do, I have to call Dallas.
And the answer is no.
No. Well, that's what I told them, and that's specifically the one that I turned in with the blood wars across the street from me. They had two months of over $500 a month in a water bill, and they're gone at least...
We can go into the details of that, but I'll agree with what Mr. Pearson said, and I can provide you the specifics on that address. It's based on consumption, and it's based on the rates that we have adopted by council. So consumption is there in this particular case that you're referring to, and again, what we're talking about here is printing of those bills. And so we recommend, based on the bid that was brought in in May of 2016, we're recommending a renewal for one more year.
Yeah, that's the only thing I was wondering, because the folks have a place right outside San Antonio, and they're there for two weeks out of every month, and it's only two of them.
Council, any other question or comments?
Have we ever looked at the feasibility of doing this in-house, purchasing the equipment, hiring the people to do it? Is it a full study?
We haven't in recent years, no, sir. We could do so, but we haven't in recent years.
I'd say let's hold off. We got so many issues with water billing, we need to get that figured out before we think we can hit print.
And the other thing I'd say is, as Mr. Pearson mentioned, we're talking about 37,000 bills on a monthly basis, and they go out every single month.
As our, is that number increased, or what strides, let me rephrase, what strides are we making to move people to like electronic billing formats and things like that?
Well, that's a good question. In looking at our numbers over the last year, it averages about 30, anywhere, excuse me, it averages about 37,000. We have roughly 37,000 accounts, but some of those are multiple accounts, not all of them receive a bill. So we, of course, advertise on our website, we have information in regards to recurring accounts, and we haven't seen over the last year of market reduction in, in the actual number of bills that go out.
So is that something that maybe we could look into improving, that communication to switch to electronic?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question on this item? Well, I believe we've got a lot of staff report, a lot of comments from council.
No, I just want to follow up on one thing. You know, that's, I guess, over the last month or so, we've gotten a lot of people calling in about their water bills. And, and you know, I know we've got a lot of users around here, you know, of water bills and things of that nature over there, but that's probably the biggest thing that I hear about. It's not as much on traffic anymore, it's everybody's water bill, is what it is. And so, you know, I'd just like to, you know, you know, and we spent, what, 13 million on meters and 7 million to come into the city and stuff, so we've spent 20 million so far, or will be, what's been approved. And, you know, just kind of would like to see that this kind of goes away, whatever we do. If the meters are bad, or if they're not bad, the people use them, send them a letter and say, use more water, what you think you are, on there to come out with it, I mean, and stop some of whatever's going on.
I'll agree. I mean, the water billing staff deals with that daily, so they feel it more than any of us here. But in proportion, you know, it's, it's not perfect or near where we're acceptable where we want it, but it'll, it'll get better. We haven't received, we just received the new meters, haven't deployed a single one of those yet, so that's a ongoing thing, and we'll continue to improve the reporting and the education, the follow-ups and all that.
I got my bill a little earlier, let's see, last, last part of last week, and the numbers were good. Bill looked good.
I just want to make one, one comment, just anybody out there that's watching or listening, that there, there are some areas that, and Mr. Pearson, correct me if I'm wrong, that have a fee that's attached to their water bill that is through the mud, and typically, people that are also getting water from the city of Houston opposed to being supplied from the city of Pearland, there's, there's a surcharge, so there is an additional charge on those bills, which a lot of people that contacted me were not aware about. And so that, that causes their bill to be a little bit higher also, and that's not of our doing.
Remember, you're correct about the, there is a mud surcharge that's mandated for some areas. I don't know about the city Houston piece, but it's for areas that the city serves with our water. Another piece of the fee structure is that those have one and a half times the city rate if you're in the city limits, but that's mandated as well. We've adopted that, and so there's a number of questions that you all received, and majority of those were from, one of those areas that's outside the city limits that has a one and a half times our, our water rate. So again, that was based on usage and the rate applied correctly.
Any other question or comment? How about a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to new business item seven, back to you, Councilmember Carbone, to wrap up here.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action, second and final reading of ordinance 1544-2, so moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second we're in a discussion, staff report.
Second reading of our budget amendment, our mid-year for the current fiscal year '18 that ends September 30th. I've gone through and done estimates for the year and truing up a wide range of revenues, expenditures. Also, this includes a couple unusual things in terms of, at the beginning of the year, we'd set some expenditures aside based upon seeing how revenues came in and, and budget and so forth. We're not able to follow through on those, so those are being taken out of the budget in some cases. And then also, this also includes and recognizes some of the FEMA monies, reimbursements from the hurricane responses, and puts the receivable, some of those funds, but then also is holding back some until we actually receive them. So combination, a lot of pieces, but this is part of our regular budget surveillance and process. And then this also includes, as we noted, making more accurate the water and sewer revenues for the fund that's positive, puts that on a more firm foundation, and increases the revenue into the water and sewer fund by a couple million dollars based upon usage, increased consumption throughout the whole system.
Council, any question or comment at this point? Carbone?
I'm sure we do some sort of reporting back to the TWDB, or, I guess the question is, we've just talked about water billing, and now we're saying, yay, we've, we've got a positive more revenue into the water. Have we looked at it like from an analytical, high-level side? Are we producing, are we producing as much water and as, or are we accounting for more? What's, what's underlying that a little bit further?
So a couple of things, I think Mr. McCarter mentioned that some of it was after the storm, we weren't able to bill and catching that up and then truing up those estimates. First, we need to do more in terms of surveillance. There's a lot of moving pieces, there's the billing, there's the meter reads, and then there's the production of the water, so we're going to have to figure out a better system. And I think the new systems will give us the tools to be able to do that, but we need more real-time, like we do a sales tax about, so we can keep our fingers on that pulse better. But the big thing that, you know, as of today, we're being told is that it is based upon consumption, I mean, it's hotter, people are using more water, and so that's flowing through literally.
I guess, does, from the operational side, is that, do we see that? I assume we track how much we pump out of the wells and how much we take from Houston?
Part of that's the delay from when you take the water, produce it, push it, bill it, meter it, et cetera, so there's all these different stages out of it. But, you know, production, I don't know if we're making broad statements about how it's been running the last couple of months.
Overall, Councilman Carbone, City Manager Pearson's correct, is that by the time you track it, but we are having higher usage as we see at this time of year with the temperatures that we have, higher usage is going on.
Yeah.
Very true.
I think maybe the follow-up question, annually, the water usage this time of year is, is, is higher. Are we seeing more use annually in 2017 and '18 as we did from '15 or '16?
You are correct, Councilman Perez. Usage has grown up as the city has continued to grow, but this time of year, we see that with irrigation systems, et cetera, that it does trend that way.
And do we think that we anticipate a higher usage per capita?
That is a floating number that always moves around, and so with, times have changed over time with conservation needs, low-flow toilets, et cetera, those compensate around, people are more conscious as they go along. But we track, we try and track that trend, and we're actually going through that water modeling right now to see what that trend is over time. But peak demand is based off of our two-year, three-year trend, so utilizing those numbers in 2015 all the way up till now. We use that for modeling so we can make sure we have adequate supplies for the future.
The good news is we've got water. Any other question or comment from council? Ignan, we have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to our agenda at item nine, mayor council issues for future council agendas. No request for that. Other business, there is none. Adjournment? We will do that. We are adjourned at eight. We are adjourned at 8:49. Thank all of you for being here tonight. We did a good job. Thank you.